Good morning, good morning. God bless you. This is Pastor Lavina Smith, pastor of the New Mount Olive Baptist Church, Wilmington, Delaware, and we greet you with Jesus' joy. Just want to say to all of the listeners for Bible study, that on this Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00 at New Mount Olive, 4412 Washington Boulevard, we will have Sister Kim Smith will be available to do voters registration. We know that some people can't get out or haven't been able to get out to vote, and I feel that this is a year that we all need to exercise our rights. For whoever it is that you want to be in office to help our country, then you would make that choice. We are simply providing you an outlet or a place that you can come to register to vote, because every vote matters, just like all lives matter. So if you are interested this Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00, please come out and register to vote. God bless you this morning. We are in the book of Joel, and we are studying this morning chapters 37, 38, and 39. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, for last night's slumber and sleep. We thank you, Father, for the beautiful rain that you allowed to come down to water the earth, because we needed that on the trees and the grass and the plants and the vegetables. So God, thank you for your liquid sunshine. We thank you, Lord, because you do everything well. You know what to give us and what not to give us, when to give it, and how to give it. So God, we thank you for that. Bless our families, bless the families that are listening, families that are grieving today, God, and families that have loved ones in the hospitals and they're not able to see them. Lord, we ask that you just bring peace and comfort to all of these persons. We thank you, God, because we never know when the death angel will knock on our doors and we will go through death, or the sickness will come. But we know that you are a God that is a God, that is a healing God, and you're able to do anything but fail. So help us, Lord, as we grow in your grace and in your knowledge that we will be able to deal with the problems that we have in life. Letting us be mindful, God, that you are yet the author and finisher of our faith. It is in Jesus' name that we pray with thanksgiving, and all who agree said, "Amen, amen." You remember last week in chapter 36, we were talking about Elihu, and Elihu was speaking of God's dealings with man. Elihu was trying to explain to Job that God was God, that he was a strong God, that he was an almighty God, that he was a God that was strong in strength and power, and that he had little regard for those people who were wise in their own understandings or wise in their own conceit. So now we are moving into chapter 37 today. And in chapter 37, there are three things I want you to jot down that we're looking at studying today. Number one, for chapter 37, that God observes the power, I'm sorry, that Elihu observes the power of God. He observes the power. That's going to be in verses 1 through 13. The second thing is that Job required to explain the works of nature. Job required, or is required, to explain the works of nature. That's going to be in verses 14 through 20. And the third thing is that God is great and is to be feared. God is great and is to be feared, and that will be found in verses 21 through 24. Let us begin today as we look at the King James Version. "At this also my heart trembled, and is moved out of his place. Hear attentively the noise of his voice, and the sound that goeth out of his mouth. He directed it under the whole heavens, and his lightning unto the ends of the earth. After it a voice roareth; he thundereth with the voice of his excellency, and he will not stay them when his voice is heard. God thundereth marvelously with his voice, great things the peak, which we cannot comprehend." Amen. So many times things are done by God, we don't even comprehend or understand why God does what he does. We all know that favor isn't fair, and sometimes he puts favor on it, it's not fair, and we get blessed, and we're like, "Lord, thank you for the blessing." But then sometimes there are things that are perplexed that he puts in our lives, and we must also learn at that time to thank him as well. So it ends up being a Philippians 4, "In whatsoever state I am in, I have to learn to be content." So in verse 6, it says, "Job 37, verse 6. For he said to the snow, 'Be thou on the earth, likewise to the small rain, and to the great rain of his strength.' He seal it up the hand of every man, that all men may know his work. Then the beasts go into dens, and remain in their places. Out of the south cometh the whirlwind, and cold out of the north. By the breath of God frost is given." Can you imagine him breathing the breath of God and frost? And we've all seen what frost looks like and feels like. "And the breath of the waters is straightened. Also by watering the wet, the weary, the thick cloud, he scattereth his bright cloud." Some days it looks gloomy, some days it's bright. This is all under the control of God. And then it says in verse 12, "And it is turned round about by his counsels, that they may do whatsoever he commanded them upon the face of the world in the earth. He causeth it to rain," I'm sorry, "he causeth it to come, whether for correction, or for his land, or for mercy." So as we are studying those verses, what it's telling us is that the changes of the weather are the subject of a great deal of thought, of our thoughts and common talk. Lots of times you'll hear the weather people on the TV talking about, the meteorologists talking about the storms, or the sunshine, or it's cold today, or this is a record breaker. And we, it is just a blessing and amazing to know that our God controls all of that, and he is the one that makes us have additional conversations in our lives. We must notice the glory of God, not only in the thunder and the lightning, but in the more common and less awful changes of the weather, as the snow and the rain. Nature directs all creatures to shelter themselves from a storm, and shall man only be unprovided with a refuge? All that men would listen if we would just listen to the voice of God, who in many ways warns them to flee from the wrath to come, and invites them to accept his salvation. So it says, "And that we should accept it, and we should be happy." Let us now look at verses 14. And it says, "Harken unto this, O Job, stand still, and consider the wondrous works of God. Dost thou know when God disposed them, and caused the light of his cloud to shine? Dost thou know the balancing of the clouds, the wondrous works of him which is perfect in knowledge? How thy garments are worn, when he quieted the earth by the south wind?" The blessing and the beauty is that God has a little bit, he has the four seasons, so it's a little bit of everything for everybody. Everyone wasn't going to like it to be warm always. Everyone's not going to like it to be cold always. Everyone is not going to like it to be cool, and everyone's not going to like it to be springish. So God has given us a diversity of weather so we could enjoy and appreciate everything. "The north colder, the south winds warmer." 18 says, "Hast thou with him spread out the sky, which is strong, and has a molting-looking glass? Teach us what we shall say unto him; for we cannot order our speech by reason of darkness. Shall it be told him that I speak? If a man speaks, surely he shall be swallowed up." So do thoughts of the work of God will help to reconcile us to all of his providences. As God has a powerful freezing north wind, so he has a thawing composing south wind. The Spirit is compared to both, because he both convinces and he also comforts. He has a way of getting our attention, but he can also bring comfort in the time of need. And so as we look at verses 21 to 24. "And now men see not the bright light which is in the clouds, but the wind passeth, and cleanseth them. Fair weather cometh out of the north, with God is terrible majesty. Touching the Almighty, we cannot find him out. He is excellent in power, and in judgment, and in plenty of justice. He will not afflict." And verse 24 says, "Men do therefore fear him. He respected not any that are wise in heart." And so that is saying to us, that Elihu concludes his discourse with some great sayings concerning the glory of God. "Light always is, but is not always to be seen. When clouds come between, the sun is darkened in the clear sky, or the clear day. The light of God's favor shines ever towards his faithful servant, though it be not always seen." Sometimes we don't see it, sometimes we wonder and we question God. But we need to know that those of us who believe in God, who are saved, who have accepted him in the pardon of our sins, and have asked forgiveness, God is still in our good graces, or we are in the good graces with God. What is that wind that it talks about in these verses? That wind is his Holy Spirit, and the wind dispels and sweeps away the clouds that are gathered in the air. So the Spirit of God clears our souls from the clouds and fogs of ignorance and unbeliever, of sin and guilt and lust, because sin and lust and ignorance and unbeliever can really cloud our minds. From all these clouds of the Holy Spirit, it frees us in the work of regeneration, rebirth. And from all the clouds which trouble our consciousness, the Holy Spirit sets us free in the work of consolation. And so now that God is about to speak in chapter 38, we're going to see now that God is going to speak to Job. Elihu has delivered a few words and the sum of all his discourse, but with God, he talks about everything, and now God is going to speak to Job himself. So here we are now in chapter 38. "Then the Lord answered Job out of the whirlwind, and said, 'Who is this that darkens counsel thy words without knowledge? Gird up now thy loins like a man; for I will demand of thee, and answer thou.'" Tell them to gird up your loins and be a man. He tells them, "Take ownership for who you are." Verse 4, "Where wast thou when I laid the foundations of the earth?" Or "set," it says, "of the earth." "Declare if thou hast understanding. Who hath laid the measures thereof, if thou know it? Or who hath stretched the line upon it? Wherefore are the foundations?" Okay, so what he's saying as he looks here in verses especially 1 to 3, when he tells him to gird up now thy loins like a man, "for I will demand of thee." See, Job had silenced, but was not convinced of his wrongdoings. He was not convinced from his friends, and so Elihu came through, remember, speaking to Job and to his friend, and he had silenced Job, but had not brought him to the point that Job had repented. So God is saying, "Now let me speak to you." It pleased the Lord to interpose. It pleased the Lord to come in now and correct Job. The Lord in this discourse, he humbles Job. He humbles Job and brings him to repent of his passionate expressions concerning Job's providential dealings with him, and this he does by calling upon Job to compare God's beings from everlasting to everlasting. And those next few verses that we will read, he's saying, "Okay, Job, you know, if you were that good, then where were you in the beginning?" And that's where we are continuing. So read verse 4 again to give you the essence. "Where wast thou when I laid the foundations of the earth? Declare if thou hast understanding. Who hath laid the measures thereof, if thou know it? Or who hath stretched the line upon it? Whereas are the foundations thereof fastened? Or who laid the cornerstone thereof? When the morning stars sang together, and all the sons of God shouted for joy? Or who shut up the sea with doors, when it break forth, as if it had issued out of the womb? When I made the cloud that garment thereof, the thick darkness of a swaddling band for it, and break it up for my decreed place, and set bars and doors?" Now verse 11, "And said hitherto, shalt thou come, but no further, and here shalt thy proud ways be saved." What he is saying, as he is talking to us now in these verses, he's saying this for the unbeliever of Job himself. God here shows him his ignorance. "Job, you don't know anything about this. You didn't do this." That even concerning the earth and the sea. And as we cannot find thought with God's work, so we need not fear of concerning it. The works of his providence, as well as the work of creation, never can be broken, and the work of redemption is no less firm, of which Christ himself is both the foundation and the cornerstone. In other words, beloved, the church stands as firm as the earth. And so let us continue with verse number 12. Job 38, verse 12. "Thou hast commanded the morning since thy days, and caused the day-spring to know his place, that it might take hold of the ends of the earth, that the wicked might be shaken out of it, and it turned as clay to the seal, and they stand as a garment; and from the wicked their life is withhold, holding, and the high arm shall be broken. Hast thou entered into the springs of the sea? Or hast thou walked in the search of the death? Have the gates of death been opened unto thee? Or hast thou seen the doors of the shadow of death? Hast thou perceived the breath of the earth? Declare if thou know it all. Where is the way where light dwelleth? And as for darkness, where is the place thereof?" "Thou," verse 20, "that thou shouldst take it to the bounds thereof, and thou shouldst know how the paths of the house thereof, and that thou should know it, the path of the house thereof. Know it thou it, because thou wast then born?" In other words, when all of this stuff happened, do you know about it? Were you born? Because he knows that Job was not alive in creation, amen? So he asked him, "Wast thou there? Were you born?" And it goes on to tell us. Let us look now at verse 22. "Hast thou entered into the treasures of snow? Or hast thou seen the treasures of the whole, which I have reserved against the time of trouble, against the day of battle and war? By what way is the light deported, which scattered the east wind upon the earth?" So the Lord questions Job to convince him of the ignorance and shame him for his folly in prescribing to God. If we thus try ourselves, we shall soon be brought to our own, to what we know is nothing in comparison as to what God knows. Verse 25 says, "Who hath divided the water from the overflowing of waters, or away from the lightning of thunder, to cause it to rain on the earth, where no man is, on the wilderness wherein there is no man? To satisfy the desolate and waste ground? And to cause the bud of the tender earth to spring forth?" Have you ever noticed when you're traveling along and you see that there are trees and beautiful flowers along these high mountains? We know that man does not get up there to cover those things. There is not a water sprinkler system high up in the mountain. But yet these trees are green every year. These trees that we see brown during the fall and winter, but here comes spring and summer, and they sprout up. That is proof that there is a God who is nurturing and watering and caring for everything that he has made. Verse 28, "Hast the rain of Father, or hast forgotten the drops of dew? Out of whose womb came the ice, and the hoary frost of heaven? And who hath, who hath generated it?" Verse 30, "The waters are hid as with a stone, and the face of the deep is frozen. Canst thou bind the sweet influences of Pelades, or lose the bands of Heryon? Canst thou bring forth Mazarok in his season? Or cast thy guide Arturos and with his sons? Knoweth thou the ordinances of heaven? Canst thou set the dominion thereof in the earth? Canst thou lift up thy voice to the clouds, and abundance of waters?" He goes on, and he's speaking to him. And let's look at verse 36. "Who hath put wisdom in the inward parts? Or who hath given understanding to the heart? Who can number the clouds in wisdom? Or who can stay the bottles of heaven? When the dust groweth into hardness, and the clouds cleave fast together, wilt thou hunt the prey for the lion? Or fill the appetite of the young lion? When thou couch in their dens, and abide in the cupboard to lie in wait? Who provided for the raven his food? When his young ones cry unto God? They wander with for lack of meat." Other words, he's provided for every animal, for everything. He has been the provider. He takes care of the young ravens. Certainly will not be wanting his people. If I can take care of a bird, I should definitely be able to take care of my people. We praise God today because he has provided for us. He has provided ways of having food shelters, and having people, and churches opening their doors when possible, that we might be fed. God will provide and meet our every need. Now our final verse today comes from chapter 39, and we are going to go through some of the verses and some we will skip through today. But it says to us, "Knowest thou the time when the wild goats of the rock bring forth? Or canst thou mark when the hinds do calve? Canst thou number the months that they fulfill? Or knowest thou the time when they bring forth?" He's letting us know from this, "Do you know how things are going to happen? Do you know how many months it takes for an animal to have a child or to reproduce?" And it says in verse 4, "Their young ones are in good liking. They grow up with corn; they go forth and return not unto death. Who hath sent out the wild ox free? Or who hath boost the bands of the wild ox? Whose house I have made the wilderness, and the barren land his dwelling? He scorneth, and the multitude of the city neither regarded he the crying of the driver. The range of the mountains is his pasture, and he searcheth, and he searcheth after every green thing. Will the unicorn be willing to serve thee, or abide by thy cribs? Canst thou bind the unicorn with his band in the furrow? And will he herald the valleys after thee? Wilt thou trust him, because his strength is great? Or wilt thou leave his labor to him?" He's asking this, is he able to serve but not willing? And God, and he says, and God challenges. He's telling us that he has and provided for a wild ox, a colt. He's provided for this unicorn that God not provide for us. Verse 13, "Gavet thou the goodly wings unto the peacocks, or the wings and feathers unto the ostrich, which leaveth her eggs in the earth, and warmeth them in dust, and forgetteth that the foot may crush them, or that the wild beast may break them. She is hardened against her young ones, as though they were not hers. Her labor is in vain without fear, because God hath deprived her of wisdom; neither hath he imparted to her understanding. What time she lifted up herself on high, she scorned the horse and the rider." He's looking at this, and he's saying that those gifts are not always the most valuable ones that make the finest show. Who would not rather have the voice of a nightingale than the tail of a peacock? The eye of an eagle for her soaring wings, and the natural affection of the stork, that the beautiful feathers of the ostrich, who can never rise above the earth and is without natural affection. In other words, I've given all of these things, and I've given them purposes, and I've given them reasons. Everything has a purpose, everything has a reason. Verse 26 says, "Dost the hawk fly by?" Verse twenty-six says, "Dost the hawk fly by thy wisdom and stretch out her wings toward the south? Does the eagle mount up at thy command and make her nest on high? She dwelleth and abide it on the rock, upon the crag of the rock and the strong place; from thence she seeketh the prey, and her eyes behold afar off. Her young ones also suck up blood, and where the slain are, there she is." What we're going to learn next week, that God continues to talk to Job. He's continuing to tell Job, "Job, don't you see? I have done these things. I've done these things." So we are going to read forty, forty-one, and forty-two, and then at, in chapter forty-two, uh, something wonderful is going to occur. So as we are going to read, as God is speaking and telling Job, "Job, you're not that great. You're great, but I am almighty. I have not left you. I have not forsaken you. The things that are happening and going on around you, Job, I am responsible for." And I want to say today, beloved, as we close, be mindful that there is nothing too hard for God. Again, Genesis asks the question, "Is there anything?" Jeremiah answers, "There is nothing too hard for God." Everything, every trial, every situation that we are experiencing today, God has the answer. May God bless you. May his peace be upon you.